All right, and it's now 7:00 PM. We have called the Pittsland County Board Supervisors Call Meeting to order Thursday, March 26, 2020, 7:00 PM, Gallery Room, Chatham Community Center, 115 South Main Street, Chatham, Virginia. I'd also like to recognize two of our supervisors that are calling in tonight as they practice safe distancing and keeping themselves safe during the coronavirus. Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Ingram and Dr. Miller.
Mr. Ingram, just to make this legal in our remote meeting policy, can you please give us the address you're calling in from so we can enter it into the minutes?
Yes, sir. I'm calling from 1301 Deer Crest Lane, Danville, Virginia, in the heart of Pittsland County.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Miller, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Can you give us the address you're calling in from for the minutes, please?
181 Trenship Road Extension, Chatham, Virginia, 24531.
All right, well, thank you. At any time we lose you, just let us know, we'll get you back on, okay?
All right.
Okay, roll call.
Right, Mr. Davis.
Right.
Mr. Dudley.
Right.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
We have Mr. Ingram on the phone, Dr. Miller on the phone, Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Farmer, presenting discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Dudley.
Yes.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Okay, we've done a public hearing, FY 2021 Proposed Pittsland County School Budget, and that's A, and B is FY 2021 Proposed Pittsland County Budget, and we have a presentation by County Administrator David Smithman, who is going to come up and do it from here since we're being held by, and we'll ask that Mr. Farmer himself and Mr. Scares relocate while he's upstairs.
Good evening, Board Supervisors, and the public. Glad you guys are able to join us by Facebook Live this evening. I'm going to give a condensed presentation of the presentation we received a few weeks ago when we originally presented the budget. Since that time, the county Board Supervisors Finance Committee has met and made several changes to the proposals, yeah, several changes to the proposals we think are with, and we'll wrap up with those changes. So, from a high level, the county's financial status is definitely improving from where we were just a few years ago. We did make significant cuts on the organization in fiscal year 2019, which was two years prior to the budget we're receiving or reviewing tonight. Those two successive operational years have created some strain on the organization. We've learned that we cut as far as we could, and now we're going through some strains, strains, and we are trying to put some meat back on the bone in some of our operations. We know that there are unmet financial needs for the landfill in our future. This proposal does detail about how we might modify our operations in the landfill to create additional revenue to reduce citizen financial burden. And then finally, we're on a pace that if we keep on this path for the next two fiscal years, when we get to FY 2023, it's apparent that we will need, it's not significant, but additional revenue, whether that comes from the natural growth through the reassessment cycle or through economic development. That is the challenge in what we'll see two years from now, looking back as to which of those areas are going to need to grow. This budget does provide an additional $615,000 to the school division above last year's appropriation. It funds the completion of the library renovation, as well as place that park upgrades. It funds a 2.1% cost of living adjustment for all county employees and $195,000 Sheriff's Department leasing program for responding vehicles. It provides four additional FTVs, three are full-time positions, two half-time positions, and it does fully fund a community-based correction plan for our new future jail facilities. The first step in securing state-level financial participation to help us with that future expense. There is that tax increase proposed in this budget. We have about $300,000 worth of growth in local taxes and the real estate category, plus another $300,000 of personal property category. This budget is balanced with use of one-time money, $900,000 through the sale of property. And then, two years ago, we reserved or set aside $256,500 for our reassessment project, which will begin in FY 2021, and we're pulling that out of our current designated fund balance and using it in FY 21 to begin again that reassessment process. More than half of our budget is dedicated to two categories, public safety and education. Those are 56% of what we do with taxpayer money at Pittsland County. 14% of our budget goes to debt retirement, and 14% of our budget goes to general government activities, such as these I've listed here. We hear a lot sometimes about a high tax rate, and the purpose of this slide is to show that the tax rate really doesn't tell much of the story. In Danville, for instance, the average citizen pays $427, but their tax rate there is 22 cents higher than Pittslandians', so it takes 22 extra cents on the tax rate to generate 28 bucks per person in there. It shows the disparity that the tax rate really doesn't tell the story. In Pittsland County, at 62 cent tax rate, the average citizen spends $399 on local services. Our neighbors in Franklin County spend $642 per person, and Bedford County $569 per person, so it's quite a range, and those two I just mentioned have lower tax rates than us, a higher tax burden. The county continues to repay outstanding debt. We have paid off $33 million of outstanding loans since 2016, and we see additional relief coming down the road in 2023, 2026. We'll see reductions in our debt payments, which will help tremendously. But we still have plenty of capacity to borrow. It sounds like we have a lot of debt, but we actually have less than average debt load for Virginia locality, but we have plenty of capacity to borrow if we ever need to borrow anytime soon. Our fund balance is beginning to rise. We have a goal of maintaining 20% of our annual average operating cost in reserve, and from a straight number standpoint, we're well above that. However, to replenish our fund balance to where we think it needs to be, we need about $16 million more to be dedicated to fund that. Michigan City, we're putting in an additional $1 billion in FY 19, an additional $1 million in leasehold and FY 21.
Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Ross. I'm calling that. Dr. Miller? We, our school division funding, we've completed-
Hey, yeah, you can hear that.
I hear you. I'm going to call Dr. Miller here.
Yeah, he works a lot.
In FY 19, we had added $1.6 million to our annual contribution to the schools, and FY 20, it's $500,000, as proposed, and $650,000 additional in this proposed budget. This budget also, we hope, will help the schoolwork finish their case study, but we also know that this budget does not address their capital needs. There's $45 million worth of immediate maintenance and repair and renovation needs in our school system, and we are very hopeful that we are able to go forward before the voters measure this fall to raise sales tax by 1%, which would generate around $2.8 million annually to fund our outstanding maintenance needs in the school system. Quickly on the landfill, this is where we are today. We're pulling in about 42,000 tons of garbage a year and generating $30 million over a 10-year horizon, but we've got about $36 million worth of financial capital needs that we know are going to be addressed over the next 10 years in our current revenue model. So we are projecting bringing in garbage from neighboring jurisdictions, not getting further than adjacent, basically, to our community. Just adding 30,000 tons a year to our load would put us in a surplus position, $3.4 million, which would fund all of our capital needs and still provide additional profit to offset taxpayer spends. So when we provided the budget to the Finance Committee and Board Supervisors several weeks ago, these items were unmet. These were things needed to be funded. We have just under $1 million worth of funds set aside in contingency. We have $2 million or more requests, 2.5, 2.6 million dollars of requests. The Finance Committee has met and has recommended a proportion of these to be funded in the final proposal, and those are outlined here. We have $987,000 available. We recommended, staff did, that we remain with a floor amount of $235,000 as unobligated. The Finance Committee has put together this schedule for those funds. It leaves $79,100 as unobligated, but does fund quite a bit of the board's priorities for FY 21. What does our present state of emergency mean to the budget? I don't think any of us know, but we do know that things are going to be different. We certainly believe that sales tax will be impacted by this environment that we're in now, this economic environment that we're coming into. If our citizens have a harder time paying their bills, we can expect our real estate and personal property receipts to come in at a lower collection rate. Our treasurer brings in about 96, I think, percent of our real estate transactions in a economic downturn, and expect that collection rate to go down. We certainly are cognizant of our cash flow position in May, in June of each year. We are in a, that is the raining of our funds, and we get to a place where if revenue doesn't start coming in for the June 20 deadline, we get in a very tight pinch with cash flow. This banner, I was talking to our financial advisor about options if we ever get into a place where we need short-term cash. We don't anticipate that at this time, but we do want to make sure we're ready in case unforeseen circumstances exist. We have begun working to collect all of our expenses for this event, to reimburse the FEMA. We're going to start doing that on a weekly basis, Fridays at 5:00. Everyone will be submitting their costs related to this event, and we are going to be the first in line for FEMA public assistance funding. There's certainly more to come. We don't know exactly what that is. We don't know where these impacts will show up, but we will be monitoring them going forward. Going forward tonight, we are receiving public comments, official public comments required by the Virginia Code. On April 2nd, at 6:30, the Finance Committee will meet its final time and forward a recommendation to the full board, which will meet at 7:00 PM and be charged with adopting the budget. After that, it becomes an exercise for staff in monitoring the financial situation throughout the country and Virginia and locally, to how these effects may impact this budget. I believe that by early June, we're going to need to make proposals to the Finance Committee about adjustments necessary to this budget, because I certainly foresee that before July 1st, a proposal you adopt on April 2nd will need to be changed. And our goal is to make sure we have the best data possible to propose those changes to you, those changes are proposed and adopted before July 1st. So we will in actuality be doing a budget amendment to this budget for FY 21 before FY 21 starts, but we have a few months to get our hands around the economy and how that might affect us. So no later than June 30th, we will be coming to the full board supervisors with alternate proposals going forward into FY 21, adjusting our operational budget. So tonight is for the public, and Mr. Warren, I'll turn it over to you to conduct the two necessary public hearings, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board, either in your discretion before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman. Okay, we're on public hearing, item number 4A, FY 2021 Proposed Pittsland County School Budget. Did we, do we have anybody here to speak tonight? Do we, did we have anybody send anything in, gentlemen?
Yes, sir, we did have one. I think we'll hold it. You think it's for the schools or for, I don't guess it matters.
It doesn't matter.
Want to explain?
Yeah, so for the benefit of the public and the benefit of the board, we offered the public alternate means of submitting comments on this budget. We solicited online call-in and US mail opportunities to comment on this budget. We received one written comment, which each member has a copy in front of them, but for the record, Mr. Chairman, we would advise reading this statement publicly, and either me or Beaton would like to do that.
I'll be happy to read it for you.
This was received on today at 2:02 PM from Earl Glass, and it says, "To Mr. Smithman, Board Members, Mr. Warren, Mr. Scares, Mr. Ingram, Mr. Davis, Mr. Dudley, Mr. Farmer, and Dr. Miller. My name is Earl Glass, and I am a physical education teacher at Danville Middle School in my 30th year of teaching. I want to start by saying thank you to the board for all your support, especially in recent years, where since 2016, you have provided an additional $2.5 million in local funding to our school system. I am grateful for that. I come to you again. I spoke at the last two years' meetings, but unfortunately cannot make it tonight to ask that you grant the Pittsland County Schools' request of the increase of 1.3 million, which will be used not only for, but especially the final phase of the compensation study. That will be such a great boost for our profession and our teachers. Pittsland County Schools has continued to excel in major areas like having 100% of our schools fully accredited. The state average is only 92%. Also, the divisions pass rate on the reading, writing, mathematics, history, and science SOLs are all above the state average, and Pittsland County School has on-time graduation rate of 90.9%. Pittsland County Schools is continually recognized in state and national BETA, DECA, FBLA, FFA, Skills USA, and band competitions, and VHSL activities. Also, our schools do many service projects of giving back, like programs that honor veterans, first responders, and has schools that raise money for projects like pediatric cancer, diabetes, and cardiovascular disease. However, the division ranks at the bottom, 125 out of 132 school divisions in the state in total per pupil funding for education. Again, thank you for what you have done, but respectfully, I ask that you fully fund the Pittsland County Schools' financial request. Stay well, stay healthy, and God bless each of you. Respectfully, Earl Glass."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hart. Do we have anyone else sign up for the Pittsland County School Budget? Okay, I'll close that public hearing at 7:20 and open the FY 2021 Pittsland County Budget at 7:20.
How many signed up?
No one signed up? Okay, I'll close it at 7:20. That's all the business we had tonight, so I will declare-
If you'd like, at your discretion, I asked Mr. Slimp, Office Executive Director, come to brief the board on activities that we're detecting right now. Is that something you care to do?
Yes, based on the emergency situation we're in, I see that the sheriff is in attendance tonight. He may want to contribute to that, too, and Dr. Jones is also here. He may want to contribute. I know the school system are doing some additional things, and since we're going out on Facebook, Dr. Jones, would you like to take this opportunity, the three of you all, to let the citizens know everything that's going on and available to them? It's a good opportunity since it's going out on Facebook.
While Mr. Slimp is coming up, I'll let you, I'll have Mr. Slimp focus on our emergency response. I will tell you that our departments are all working from home. We're answering phones eight to five, as if nothing is different. I think this cluster vouchs that the phone is still very, very busy, and we're answering every single call and making sure that people are being served. We are serving our building community and planning inspections, customers by appointment only, and they've had appointments since we have been closed. We are closed until April 12th at this current time, and most likely will extend that if conditions do not significantly change. We're working hard to get personal protective equipment for all of our people, and that is slowly starting to come online. We're cataloging what we have with the help of the sheriff. We've cobbled our supplies, and we are taking orders or requests from our constituent department heads to make sure that their employees have the personal protective equipment they need. And I'll let Mr. Slimp tell us about what's going on in our emergency response areas.
Go ahead, Mr. Slimp, say. Thank you. Since the sheriff's here, I'm lucky to steal some of his phone because he's been a big help. I'm surprised he's still answering my phone calls after the date, but I call him, I think, every hour or so. As you may remember, I know we opened a virtual emergency operations center on March 13th, and daily data is updated by all the emergency services functions, our support functions that is, and so we are able to track what each of the departments are doing and what their needs are and what they're planning for the next day as well. We have conference calls. I do at least twice a week with the region, the G Part Mercy Management and all the regional emergency managers, factories and stuff. We talk, use the tools that are there in the mornings, and we share and swap ideas, which has been great. I talk daily with a couple of my closer counterparts that are surrounding us and are really good friends with, and we swap ideas and, you know, things that we can do to help each other as well. We've got a great idea. I'll tell you about it from the one that we're working on right now. And then internally, we communicate often, Mr. Smithman and I communicate, but we continue to push out information to all of you. We'll be doing another conference call with him tomorrow. I had Mike and Casey have met or tried to catch up with all of them one-on-one. I threw out this to make sure we're taking care of their needs as well, if there's anything they might need. We modify dispatch protocols to how we respond to emergencies, and the sheriff has also modified how he does some things as well. I'll let you, I'll tell you about that. We also have communication with the Virginia Health Department, and we have several communications with the hospitals surrounding us, because they change the way they do things, and bring the patients in and screening and so forth, so we're making sure we're helping and doing that as well. As Mr. Smithman mentioned, we established kind of one supply chain now with the sheriff. One of my firewipers is working with that. Then we have a task force working on starting a few of the re-disversing stuff that we're doing. I did get some bad news today. We had ordered, last week, I had a supplier come in, "I can get you some HivX suits," so I ordered quite a large quantity of them, and then I got a thing today saying, "Hey, we've got a problem in federal government community," and they took them off, and we'll redistribute that, which, that's a problem we're going to have to deal with. We have been able to get some things in, and I will tell you this, if this has done anything, it's been great. So many people from the community called in and offered up certain names. We went around the other day, we were able to get, not many, but we got some masks from the chemical manufacturers, and I believe good year also supplied us with some. I've got one volunteer that went there to look for those, and they approved one. And then I had, we've had some body shots who do painting, they use masks, and they've offered, out of their common offer, I said, immediately said a firewalter, "Go get those." So, you know, the school system, Dr. Jones, they gave us some supplies, you know, they can relinquish it for a month or week for the rest of the year. That was a huge help, and we've been able to try to disperse some of that back into some of the county departments that need some of these things. We got an idea that we ordered today, we ordered foggers, these backpack foggers, and the idea came out frankly, we can put a solution in, and we can start fogging the animals as they're in the car, and so we've ordered those for the agencies and also for, we can be candid buildings and stuff, we can do some decontamination if we need to. We established an EMS work group. They met today, and that's made up by asking Chief Fowler, he would task a couple volunteers and some of my staff, and they got the end of the day and made them, create an EMS plan as well, in case we were having a situation where we started having EMS volunteers getting sick, and, you know, we're working it out where, you know, you may have a volunteer from the north, south end of Canada, I will truck together. So we're working it out right now, tracking expenses, Mr. Smithman said, and, you know, it's been great just to, people that pitched in, but to reiterate what he says, we're open, we're doing, you know, I think we're doing well. It's all hands on deck, and I believe everybody can pitch in, is trying to pitch in, so I want to hear that, so I'll put the sheriff's a few words here, too.
Thank you, Chris. Board Supervisors, Mr. Smithman and guests, since March 5th, on March 5th, once the orders began to come in from both the federal, state, and local levels, we implemented a COVID-19 task force within our office, consisted of 12 members, each one having a separate responsibility in tracking. We've, each day, there's a little something different from CDC. We monitor CDC, the National Sheriff's Association, international chiefs of police, and the Virginia Sheriff's Association for best practices. Today, we were on the phone with the medical examiner's office about those border issues, what they can provide, what they can't provide, how to best respond to those calls for services. We did a comparison on the timeframe from a year ago, from March until today. One good thing we see is during that time period in 2019, just on the law enforcement side, we answered over 4,700 calls for service. As of today, we've answered about 1,700 calls for services. So the shelter place, those type of things, is helping us on our responses. We've been working with Chris and his group. We have an in-house command incident system, just to make sure that we are tracking on time. Those things include populations in our jail, issues in our jail, which we really have our thumb on, because if that jail were to bring in an arrestee that was showing symptoms of the virus, it could really create a problem. Early on, we moved out about 25 inmates to Blue Ridge Regional Jail, just to make space for isolation, because we had, we did not have that space. So now we have about 36 blocks that we can attribute directly to isolation. We have the suits that are available in the jail, and we are decontaminating the jail about every three hours. So there's some of the proactive things that we're doing. We identified three areas in our in-house response. The first phase, of course, was just prevention, and that was early on. We set some thresholds. When we had one confirmed case in our locality, we went to Phase Two, which really restricted some of our movements, the way we responded to calls, other protective gives. We had not- We have not reached phase three, which is just numerous confirmed cases. We are in touch every day at noon with the Health Department and looking at their updated number of cases. I think that they're a little behind on what's being reported to the Health Department, which has created an issue for them and for us, because we, we have asked, if you have a confirmed case that are quarantined to their home, could you at least provide us an address, so we'll know how to respond if that should happen? They're working with us the best they can. They are really, really regulated as far as HIPAA, and so that, that is something that I'm sure will be talked about in the future. One of the programs that we came out with yesterday, and I talked with Mr. Smith on the phone last night, we were, we've been in, and I'll tell you, Dodge Pit Crew couldn't be even better to this community than what they've been. They provided much-needed resources, they continued to provide resources. But one of the things they, one of the things they asked was, do you have anyone in your community that may, because they can't get out, sheltered in place, they don't have family, a close neighbor, maybe elderly, or children that needs food? We have a hundred thousand packets of food that we can get to. We just need some help getting that. So we put together a quick program yesterday afternoon. We have a call-in number at our office. We've been in touch with ministerial associations today, groups in our community that can identify senior citizens that may need assistance in getting their medications from the drugstores or necessary food items. And once we get that address and name, we're going to get that service out to them. We're going to utilize our data officer and our school resource officers, because they're out of school for the, for this year. So that's, we're going to use that resource as the transport piece. I talked with David yesterday. We wanted to expand that into the county, into the county offices, for those people that may want to volunteer. I think it's a great program, a good way to help in this time of need. So that's, that's going to be available. The kickoff date is Monday, March the thirtieth. Again, we're collecting the information now of those people we need to serve, so the need could be a big help in that and getting it out. Last thing I'll say is, we just want to reassure our community that the government is still running. We're here, we're going to answer the calls, we're going to, if you need something, we're going to respond to you. We're going to get you the information you need and put your mind at rest that we are still open for business, and we'll continue to be open for business. And we just remember, everybody in your prayers, remember our staff and all the staff in your prayers until we get through this crisis. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Warren, I'm Mr. Board Supervisor, Mr. Smith. Thank you for this opportunity to notify, letting people know about what we're doing with the school budget. As you're aware, the government closed schools, mandated through the end of the school year. Since that announcement, we have put in place feeding programs for children, as well as providing instructional packets, so that students can continue learning throughout the spring. We get great support from civic organizations. They have provided additional food. We can provide food for each day of the week. Weekends are a problem for some families. We've been very forced to work with Mr. Dudley, for instance, and since several civic groups have come, come forward and provided some additional feeding options for our kids, that's so important for us. Our offices are open as well. We've had, we have seniors who need transcripts at this time, and we've had many calls regarding that. Our office is open on March the thirtieth, according to seniors who need transcripts and information regarding college applications. We have been working with our state superintendent, I've been in contact with him, twice each week since the closure. He's providing information regarding what we do with seniors. Our last day of class was March the thirteenth, so how do we handle that as far as credits, promotion, retention, and grades? We've been given great guidance there, and over the next week, we'll provide that information to our staff and for our students. We've had calls concerning graduation, and I'll have to, I would like to say this, that the state superintendent is providing great flexibility to school divisions regarding seniors in particular around graduation and the verified missing credit. And for those underclassmen, SLO testing, he's brought a lot of flexibility there, so we're prepared there, and we'll provide that to, to our, our parents and students as soon as we get that to our staff members next week. Again, I'd like to reiterate what the sheriff said, we're open. Please call. Our, our buildings will be closed at the door, but if you can call ahead and ask, we'll have items ready for you, or you can come in and speak through our intercom system to our staff members and have them get whatever they need. So, Mr. Warren, thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Okay, citizens, I hope you enjoyed the update, and obviously you see that county government is operating, the school system's operating, and the sheriff's office is certainly operating, and we're very fortunate in Pennsylvania County to have the citizens we do that are reaching out and going above and beyond and volunteering to take care of those that are in positions where maybe they can't take care of themselves right now. So I compliment our staff, and I certainly compliment all those individuals that just spoke. We're all in this together, we'll get through it together, and just everyone, please stay safe, and if you need us, reach out to the appropriate individuals, and we'll get you any kind of assistance that we possibly can. We have no other business coming before this for tonight, but I want to thank Mr. Ingram for calling in, and Dr. Miller. We certainly hope you all will stay safe. We missed you tonight, but we were happy you were able to participate remotely, and once again, stay safe, and that goes for everyone else, and enjoy your upcoming weekend, and hunker down and rent some movies, and get some board games out. Seems like we'll be in for a while, so thank you all very much, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.